All right. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public at that at ten will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. The procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be live streamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. Webinar ID for this meeting is eight three zero one seven nine five five eight one two, and the required password is three five four zero five seven. I call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Dr. Morthee, Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Stephanie Arrow.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Ms. Jansen.
Here.
Mr. Kaczmarewski.
Here.
Dr. Morthee.
Here.
And our student representative, Ms. Parda.
Here.
Adequate notice of the agenda for this meeting has been provided to the rigid news and the record, specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on October eighth, twenty twenty five, in the administrative offices, sixty Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag, Mr. Kaczmarewski! Would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczmarewski.
Your call. You can.
How long do we have to speak, please?
Fifteen minutes.
So, Ms. Parda, if you would like to go, we have executive session this evening at the beginning. So if you would like to go, and we'll have your report now so that you don't have to wait for us. So, our Mawa student representative report. Ms. Parda, thank you very much.
This week is the biggest fact at Mawa High School. So our Hope Club created a spirit week with Set Base to help prevent bullying and emphasize the importance of high school community. We're hosting the marching band competition on the eleventh. The gates open at three. Also pertaining to marching band, they tied for first place last Saturday at North Brunswick High School. And they earned best music, best effect, and best guard. And they also hosted a Rainbow Ridge Music Night for students for the band. Thursday's Grade Twelve Parent Student Guidance Night at six in the auditorium. The Senior Sunrise Walk was on October first, and it was definitely a success. Habitat for Humanity worked on a Mawa beautification committee on a town cleanup last Saturday. Spirit Rally is October twenty fourth. This year, it's completely live event, so live winners out of the whole thing. Banner decorating for Spirit Week is on the twenty second. And lastly, the annual Thunderball game is on the seventeenth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, now I need a motion to recess to executive session. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Hughes. We will be back in approximately fifteen to twenty minutes. Thank you.
All right. And now I do need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Kizmarski and second by Mr. Hughes. We were a little few minutes over, but thank you for waiting. All right, let's move on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, we ask to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Coblen. We are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forth at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes and second by Mr. Kizmarski. All right, we've had our Mawa student representative report this evening, so let us move on to Dr. Dittoro, superintendent's report.
Yes, my first report, I'm going to ask Ms. Rizzo to present data on our HIV self-assessment. This is something that's mandated on a yearly basis. She's provided this information in previous years, so this is the time which she will be doing it this year.
Good evening. Obviously, we do this annually in which each building has the responsibility of self-assessing them relative to the Department of Ed rubrics. So the process, as I've shared in the past for all of you, is that building-based school safety teams, which are comprised of members of the building and in addition to one parent representative, meet to evaluate the building's performance on the rubrics applied by the Department of Ed. And the principal and the safety team gather their evidence, which they're responsible for maintaining should there be any questions relative to their self-scoring. And ultimately, I review each building's score and provide guidance on any scores in which I want to increase or decrease relative to my knowledge of their performance and the rubric. So the rubric has core elements and in the area of HIV programs, training, other staff instruction, curriculum and instruction on HIV, HIV personnel, school-level incident reporting, investigative procedures, and HIV recording. And each core element also has indicators in them. You can score as a building zero, which means you don't meet the requirement at all. You can have one point, which means you partially meet the requirements. Two points means you meet all of the requirements. And three is that you've exceeded the requirement. And then the rubric explains or guides you on your decision-making as to what the definitions actually mean and the product you have to procure. Ultimately, the maximum score that any building can achieve is 78. And as we all know, the school district average is based on each building. Mawa High School self-score is 77 out of 78, which I concur and achieve maximum scores in the core elements one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight, not giving themselves full scores in area three. Ramapo Ridge Middle School scored itself a 77 out of 78 with maximum scores in two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Joyce Kilmer scored itself a 78 out of 78, maximum scores in all areas. Betsy Ross a 77 out of 78 with maximum scores two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight in the elements. And George Washington a 77 out of 78 with maximum scores in two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Lenape Meadows a 78 out of 78 with maximum scores in all areas. So ultimately, the district average is a 77 out of 78. This score gets reported to the Department of Ed tomorrow. The Department of Ed has several months in which they review our scores and either affirm our scores or request us to make amendments. In the history that we've been self-assessing, we've never had to change our scores. So in all core elements, every building's score either meets all requirements or exceeds them. But last year, I just want to give a little data so we can remember our experience together in executive session. There were a total of 83 investigations done in the district, 26 of which were confirmed cases, having met the criteria of HIV in some identified characteristic. This is longitudinal data that I have relative to the district, going back as far as 2016, 2017. Let's not be, let's be mindful of the blip in the screen relative to COVID when you see those really low numbers. No one had cause in which to report HIV once we were in full-on lockdown. But you will see that I tallied it based on total confirmed over total investigated. And what you're seeing there is actually consistent with state and local data relative to particularly middle-school-age students. So all cases referred to the district were investigated, and as Dr. Dittoro shared earlier this evening in executive, we are a non-discretion district. So once the term harassment, intimidation, or bullying is used or referenced, we immediately open an investigation. All cases were investigated within the timeline set forth by the law. That was my commitment to the board 13 years ago, 14 years ago, when I took on HIV, that we would always be code-compliant. So our goals for last year were to continue to evaluate and use the safety team data to identify patterns related to building-based HIV cases, use the data to provide learning opportunities for the students, to address the identified behavior, and provide positive alternative behaviors to improve school cultures. And each of the safety teams were charged with using that data and formulating some changes or programs or interventions, obviously using our school-based counselors to their maximum to intervene. And to continue to use the safety team data as part of our NJTSs initiative. So for next school year, under consultation of Dr. Dittoro and Dr. Fair, I've developed the goals that we will continue to use the safety team data, obviously, for our NJTSs as part of our student support data teams, which is different than our academic support teams. Our student support data teams are comprised of teachers, but more so are therapeutic interventionists. To conduct in-district safety team training, and I'm pleased to report that we've already had one training in district for all administrators and in-district safety team members. And to continue to educate the parents on the definition of HIV and the process. So that's my goal, and that's my presentation relative to the district HIV self-assessment. We will be submitting the scores after your board vote, I mean after this presentation tomorrow. Are there any questions from the board?
Could you, the last to do the inform however, educate parents?
Yes.
Give example of how that happens.
Well, that happens in a variety of ways, but mostly it's the building administrators who take that on relative to back-to-school night. If you were there this year, we were educating parents on our HIV policy. We send out every Wednesday information from each building, and we've developed little nuggets to disperse throughout the course of the year to define the difference between HIV and conflict and/or the reporting process for families. You want to jump into it?
No, I don't.
Okay. So before I leave, the dais tonight, I just wanted to say that tonight on your board agenda is our nursing service plan. So I'm taking an opportunity to just have you, when you hear about the service nursing plan, recognize that this is documentation that we submit relative to the amount of work that our school nurses do. And as I was reviewing it over the summer and before giving it to Dr. Dittoro, I just wanted to acknowledge that within the 24-25 school year, there were over 20,000 visits to the nurses throughout the district in each building. In addition to that, while they're doing all of that service providing to our students, they provided over 3,500 mandated state screenings that we have for students: height, weight, blood pressure, scoliosis, monitoring vaccination status of students. So I just wanted to take a moment to pause and acknowledge our school nurses and the absolute effort that goes forth in their job. They are the moms away from home, and they are a safe zone for our students, but they are also medical experts for our students as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll get to the celebrations in a minute. This is another report that is required by the state. And hopefully you remember, we do this twice a year. It's our student safety data system report. There's two reporting periods. There's one from January, June, and then another one from July to December. So this is our reporting period one. As you can see, this is the total number of incidences across the spectrum that needs to be reported upon, broken out by schools. I'll give you a minute to take a look at that. The next slide talks about the proactive programs and trainings that the school provides. This is a new report, um, that is mandated by the state. Anytime that, uh, there needs to be a restraint that's put onto a student. Uh, let me just provide you a little bit of context when you look at, um, a chart like this, because I understand it can be jarring. The restraint is done when a student is posing a risk, seeking risk to him or herself or to others. The restraint is done by a staff member that is trained in safely restraining or controlling the child. Um, this is not something that we take lightly. We, we ensure that our staff across the district is trained in properly executing this strategy. And again, this is done when the student is posing a safety risk to himself. This is not done if the student is being non-compliant. They're two totally separate things. Um, so this is something that was done at, um, one of our elementary schools, and that, that's the frequency in which it took place from twenty-twenty, uh, July one, twenty-twenty-four to June thirtieth, uh, twenty-twenty-five. Any questions? Nope, okay. All right, let's get on to our celebrations. Okay, um, I am very happy to report that, um, as we shared, we are committed to, um, sharing any and all information with the community and also gathering information from the community specific to our referendum, which will, uh, the vote will happen, I believe, is March the tenth, twenty-twenty-six. This event, the state of the facility, took place on September twenty-ninth. It was an opportunity for us to gather insight and feedback from our community members. We had a sampling of parents from the elementary levels, the middle-school level, and the high-school level. Again, this was an opportunity for us to, number one, just talk about the process, but more importantly, to hear, um, from the parents across the district. A lot of the themes that we were able to receive from that night, were very similar to the information we received during our strategic planning meeting, which was encouraging, meaning that it wasn't the same parents that were coming to the strategic plan meeting and state of the facility. So it's just another effort for us to hear from the community. Um, pardon me, as I shared with the community, um, this information we're going to gather is going to allow us to really prioritize what we need to do moving forward, whether it's for the referendum or other projects that we will use our operation, operational budget for. We received another award. The Thunderbird Times tw- receives, earns the twenty-twenty-five NJSPRA Communications Award from the New Jersey School Public Relations Association, which we announce at their formal award ceremony, ceremony tomorrow. Established to support the Board of Education's goal of strengthening community connections, the newsletter reached, reached about eleven thousand homes with district-wide and school-based news. This is the district's second NJSPRA honor, following the twenty-twenty-four award of Merit for Media Relations, recognizing student participation in Habitat for Humanity fundraising. The next issue of our T-Bird Times will be hitting the mailboxes, I believe, in mid to late November. Um, on the dais in front of you, you will see, hot off the press, this is the newest edition of the school counseling newsletter. Um, the one that's up on the screen here is from the high school that was released, I think, two weeks ago. The one in front of you is from Ramapo Ridge. I just want to, um, say thank you to Mr. O'Hara. He has come in as the new Director of Guidance, uh, for school counseling. Um, he's done a great job working with all of the counselors across the district, K through twelve, um, and really understanding what the current reality is with counseling experience, but also looking at opportunities to continue to build and grow that program. One of which being communicating with our parents and allowing them to understand what's happening in the school, um, having the parents understand who are the counselors within the school, um, and a lot of the work that he has done throughout. I, we will have an opportunity, it will be coming to instruction, curriculum instruction in November, to talk about the program as a whole and all the things that he's done thus far. But what I can tell you is I'm extremely encouraged with the work that he's done. This is just one of the examples of, of what he's done to commit to, um, connecting with the community, connecting with the students, and more importantly, making sure that the staff is here to support the students throughout their process. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Di Toro. Uh, Mr. Lam, do you have a report for us this evening?
Uh, Dr. Fair first.
Oh, Dr. Fair, sorry. I skipped right over. I apologize, Dr. Fair.
So we've been talking a lot about our internship and externship program. I think everyone collectively is super proud of our, our work and our efforts. So, uh, you'll see here at your places is, uh, an invitation to all of our board trustees. Uh, on October thirtieth, uh, will be our Student Internship/Extership Capstone Presentation, where students who participated in this past summer's internship and externship programs will share their experiences during a capstone opportunity of reflection. The event will highlight the meaningful work students complete with their respective placements and showcase the skills and insights they gained from their mentors and workplace experiences. So, super proud of that. You'll also see, um, a short checklist at your places as well. Um, this checklist was made for, uh, high-school students to provide students with clarity on how to exactly achieve and, uh, Mawa High School career pathway endorsement on their high-school transcript. This is the direct response to making the path to earning the endorsement that much more transparent for our kids. Uh, if you haven't been on Instagram, this has been posted several times. Um, we're really super proud of our twenty-five, twenty-six National Merit Scholars, semifinalists and commended students. Um, we're proud to celebrate them in being recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program. Several students, students earned the distinction of a semifinalist, demonstrating exceptional academic achievement, while additional students were recognized as commended scholars for their outstanding performance. These honors reflect the dedication and talent of our students and the continued commitment of our educators to their academic excellence. Our semifinalists are Arush, Borger, Mishtha, Beas, and Arnold Zhang. And our commended scholars are Umar Kazee, Liam Fitzgerald, Christopher Haruf, Vidya Prasad, Elias Chi, Aksha Singh, and not pictured is Bhavisha Shishoya.
Good job, Dr. Fair.
Thank you.
Good job.
We also have an upcoming alumni homecoming event on October twenty-third. Uh, super excited, uh, offering alumni the opportunity to reconnect, network, and strengthen our Thunderbird community. This special event generously hosted by the Mawa Schools Foundation at the Thunderbird Think Tank celebrates our alumni and fosters ongoing partnerships that benefit both current students and the broader school community. In fact, I believe Mr. Pascal reached out to over four thousand Mawa High School graduates. That was a recent, right, recent addition? And, um, the Thunderbird Run is, uh, coming up. Uh, the Mawa Schools Foundation is also excited to host its annual Thunderbird Run on October twenty-sixth, featuring a five-k run, two-mile walk, and kids' run. The scenic race route begins and ends at Mawa High School, offering a day of community support, connection, and fun for all ages. So we hope to see the community out there. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Fair. My apologies again, and you did a very good job with the name, and that's me.
Thank you.
Um, all right, now, Mr. Lam, your report this evening.
Hey, Dr. Murphy, just, uh, one update on the agenda. Item eighteen-L was added on the agenda today. It's a transportation agreement with Mercer County Educational Services Commission to provide transportation to a student who is going out of district in that area. And, uh, contracting with, uh, that commission is a, would be a savings compared to if we had to contract with a private company. And then a few items going on in our, uh, business office and facilities. We advertised a bid for time and materials today for HBAC and refrigeration repair. Uh, by, uh, doing a bid for time and materials, we're able to do on-call with, uh, preferred contractor if they win the bid, uh, without having to worry about going over the bid threshold. And with the number of buildings we have in the district, uh, and the age of our buildings, uh, that gives Mr. Romero and his team a lot more flexibility. Uh, we're still allowed to use other vendors as well. Uh, today, uh, we got approval from our auditor for the disposal of records in Building Five. The next step is for the, uh, state to approve that. And our facilities and the technology teams have done a really good job of working with our administration on cleaning out that building and creating up a lot of space. Uh, we submitted the final expenditure reports for the ESEA grants titled one through four, uh, for last year today. Uh, and we completed the comprehensive maintenance plan. Uh, it's basically two Excel files which summarize our maintenance costs. And the state wants to make sure that we're not spending too little on maintenance, and they want to make sure we're not spending too much on maintenance. So they have certain calculations that were within those ranges. Uh, that would be on the, uh, board agenda, most likely at the end of October for your approval. Um, and that's pretty much it for the business office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, my report this evening. Um, two things. Uh, one, I just, um, want to take an opportunity, uh, on behalf of the board to just welcome back to the dais, Mr. Kizmarski. Uh, well, you were here last week, but I was not here to welcome you back. So, uh, I tried to take a short hiatus, but, you know, um, we wouldn't allow him to. So, uh, we're back, you're back, and it's just, it's nice to have you seated back with us again, Mr. Kizmarski, thank you. Um, and to have all of us tonight, but, uh, that's good to see, good to see. Um, I also just wanted to take an opportunity, um, to, uh, just wish that all of you that your school year has gotten off to a good start. Um, I wasn't here last week to, or last meeting to do that. I also wanted to take a moment, I think it's a good opportunity for parents, uh, to also have a conversation with students, um, regarding certain things. We have, uh, certain, you know, sayings, we have see something, say something. We have, there's opportunities, um, also to have conversations, I think now, about, um, online postings and what are posted and messages that are shared and so on, because these are things, um, that are important as well. And we do take statements that are made seriously as a district, and we want to make sure that, um, students, when you do make postings, whether it's text, whether it's online, whatever, um, you know, be thoughtful, intentional, and, um, responsible in what you're posting. So it might just be a good opportunity to talk to students about that as well. Um, we hope that you've made some new friends and you've learned something new. You've tried a new sport or club, uh, and we wish you all the best. So anyway, that's all I have. Um, board committee reports this evening. Mr. Kaplan, Community Relations?
Yeah, just a couple things from Community Relations. I, um, wanted to echo what, um, Dr. Di Toro said earlier about the facilities meeting. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Uh, the parents that were there were very engaging, it was great. Uh, also want to thank our admin team for coming out in force. Um, it just shows the importance of, of what we're doing and the priority that this board and this admin team has put on the upkeep of our facilities. Uh, should be pretty obvious from the decisions that we make and, um, the projects that we approve, whether, you know, from a fiscal standpoint. Um, this board and this admin team has always put, uh, you know, significant priority on making sure that the spaces that our students and staff are going into every day are, are well-kept, are modern. And, um, you know, over the next couple of months, we'll be talking a lot more about that. Um, so keep your eyes, eyes and ears open for that. Uh, also want to remind the board, uh, next Wednesday night, D.O. lighting? Is that right? The, the second annual D.O. lighting at Mawa is taking place. It's at, uh, five-thirty in front of Town Hall. We're all invited, uh, so hopefully we all can get out there and support this awesome event. Um, Community Relations is meeting Friday, and I'll, I'll have a more thorough report, uh, after that meeting, but looking forward to that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gallo?
Just very quick, um, this is Tom's last meeting with us, uh, today, and I just wish him well, and I'm sure we all wish him well in his new assignment, and appreciate working with you for the past year.
Best wishes, Tom. John? Yep, okay. Uh, board member remarks. Mr. De Silva? I feel you're going to the microphone.
Trying. Um, yeah, so I just want to bounce back to, um, excuse me, Dr. Di Toro's, uh, report and acknowledge the, uh, the strides that we've made in communications over the past several years. We have, you know, to, to win a communications award for the T-Bird Times. Wow, that is awesome, you know, the, the progress we've made there. Um, but the counseling newsletter, the pathway checklist, and the, the strides that we've made in the school counseling department, I'm thrilled to see. I, I, it's, it's, you know, it's only been a couple of months and, and to see the, the progress we've made there. Stuff that we've been talking about for a long time, and it's great to see, you know, some of this stuff could actually start to show. So, I want to acknowledge both of those. Thank you.
Would you like to give yourselves? Uh, Mr. Kaplan?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what Rick just mentioned and just share a quick story. My son's a freshman, and, um, I think it was last week, we got a email from his vice principal. The vice principal is meeting with each freshman, um, over the next. I guess it's going to take a while. But this is something, and I'm bringing this up tonight because, uh, in instruction curriculum, also outside of the committee, we've spoken about these meetings, and what does that look like? And whether or not we need to expand the junior meetings that occur in the spring to all fall classes. And, um, I'm, I was very happy to see that. And when Andrew got, came home, he actually told us about it, which was, blew my mind that he actually told us something that happened in school. Um, but the email came, you know, from the, the assistant principal. Uh, the guidance counselor was, uh, copied, but also my son was copied on the email, which I thought was a really nice touch. Um, and just reviewed what, what they spoke about, uh, what Andrew's goals are for the four years, things along those lines. So I just wanted to, uh, thank Mr. O'Hara and, and everyone in the admin team at the high school for expanding that, that touch point, I guess, for lack of a better term. Uh, because I, because we have, as a board, we've, we've spoken about this a lot. So it was really nice to see that and, and see it firsthand, so.
And, and who, so the meeting was with, uh?
Mr. McCabe.
With Mr. McCabe?
Mr. McCabe and myself.
So they, they split the?
No, no, Mr. McCabe's going to meet with everyone. Mr. O'Hara was attached to it, Mr. McCabe's running meetings with everyone.
Right, Mr. McCabe's the assistant principal for the class of twenty-nine.
Oh, for the, okay, that, I was trying to clarify if they take different classes or they split the classes, the two assistant principals, okay.
So Mr. McCabe's meeting with everyone.
That's wonderful, excellent teaching.
Very nice to see, so thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Ms. Jansen?
Oh, I, I just wanted to also add on to Rick's comment that the school communication, the individual school newsletters, I think they've expanded immensely. And having three kids in three schools last year, and now I'm down to two, it's still a lot of information for me. But it, I, I know where to look and find it, and each, and I see the other newsletters coming, even where my kids don't go. It's immensely helpful when you're just trying to find that one thing, and then you have some time to read the whole thing, that there's some really good reminders in there that, you know, we do need to talk to the kids, to your point, right? Social media, have a conversation, check in with them, and just ask what's going on, tell me what's going on. So I make the point when I do the report with multiple kids, ask them all, the same thing.
And you can't just skip, and the car's the best place.
I, I think it's free, so, it's a good reminder.
Mr. Gallo?
And I, and I'm going to fill in on Rick's.
Oh.
So there's, there's a phrase that, uh, Dr. Di Toro uses, um, oftentimes when he highlights a, a point of pride. And he doesn't say, "Oh, I'm really happy with that," or "We're, we're done." It's always unencouraged, meaning that there's more growth to come. And when we talk, and the things that Rick talked about, Brad, and Jean talked about, these are all things we are constantly building on things that we have invested in and put focus and energy into, and we're constantly building them out and extending their power and leverage to benefit our students. And I think that's sort of a theme in the things that we just talked about. And, um, and, you know, it's like, when I hear, we, I always get disappointed when he says "unencouraged." No, but it's really, it's the correct word. It's as if we have a, we have another place still to go.
Thank you, Lord, of you.
But there's all, Mike, Mike is never a, "Oh, we're done."
I'm encouraged by your comment, Mr. Gallo. Thank you.
In our search for?
I am done. I am done.
Um, all right, thank you all for your comments. And yeah, I mean, look, excellent stuff, and, and good to see, um, the news.
And yeah, I mean, look, excellent stuff and good to see the newsletter. I mean, so many, and we're glad to hear that this school year has gotten off to a good start. So, all right, let's move to old business. Let's take 17A, our minutes from September 17 meeting. I need a motion, Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. DeSilva. Roll call, please, Mr. Lam.
Mr. Copland?
Yes.
Ms. Davenaro?
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
I'm standing.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
I'm standing. Thank you. All right, let's move on to new business at this time, 18. Let's take A through AA. I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Copland. Mr. Lam, roll call, please.
Mr. Copland?
Yes, and thank you to the Amora family for the donation.
Ms. Davenaro?
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on 18A, I'm abstaining from checks 121168 and 121257.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes, I'm standing on 18Z for the shared service with the township for the SRO program. Obviously, a huge supporter of that, and Officer Burkey has been a great issue advisor.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, 19. Let's take 19A, I think through X. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Copland. Roll call, please, Mr. Lam.
Mr. Copland?
Yes, and can I point out the number of parent volunteers that are on this agenda? So thank you, everyone, for volunteering. This is an incredible number.
Ms. Davenaro?
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes. All right, public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, yours asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes, second by Ms. Jean Jansen. Seeing no one coming forth at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes, and second by Mr. Copland. All right, we do not require an executive session at the end, so motion to adjourn. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo, and we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming this evening.